Everyone, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Monrovia City Council. This Tuesday, April 20th at 7:30. We just completed a special study session with the Planning Commission. And I apologize for us being a little tardy this evening. But we appreciate everyone being here. And this evening, our invocation will be given by Pastor Johnny Venejas. Pastor Venejas, welcome. We're happy to have you here.
Thank you so much. Grateful to be here. Let's pray together. Gracious God, we come to you tonight in prayer with a posture of gratitude and Thanksgiving. And we all acknowledge that while we have so much to be thankful for, our hearts also ache. We pray you and ask for your presence in this meeting and in the hearts and minds of all who are in attendance. We thank you for the intentionality and excellence that goes into leading this city. We thank you for the many departments and teams that respond to the health, safety, and education, and social needs of the community, for the sacrificial service to individual families that call Monrovia home. We thank the leadership you have put in place that has navigated a year unlike any other. We thank you for the countless hours that have been dedicated to the service of this city. We thank you for your presence during the sleepless nights. We thank you for the rest in the midst of chaos and the beauty of the mountains that we get to see every day. We also grieve and mourn the tragedy and heartbreak in our own country and city. We pray for this country and this city to be united, and we pray for hope that only you can give to overwhelm hearts and minds. God, we pray specifically over the youth of this city. God, protect their hearts and minds as they grieve. Protect their hearts and minds as they process. Give them hope and comfort. We pray for the families and the friends that have lost youth and have lost classmates and have lost loved ones. Our hearts, can we grieve? Show us what it looks like to respond to those in need. Help us to see truth. Help us to see pain. Help us to see injustice. Help us to see one another as we are. And we see, let us respond. Let us respond to the need of our friends, of our families, of our classmates, of our coworkers, and of our neighbors. None of this can be done on our own, so we ask for your presence and direction in this meeting tonight, and also in the moments that define our lives. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you very much. Now, if you'd all please rise, Mayor Pro Tim Crutchington will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gloria. Thank you very much. I'll call on our... Is it Master Municipal Clerk, Alex Adams, to call the roll, please?
It would be my pleasure. Council members Blackburn...
Present.
Chevlin...
Here.
Spicer...
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Crutchington...
Here.
And Mayor Adams.
Here. Thank you so much. We had no closed session this evening, so we will move into our presentations and proclamations. PR 1 is a proclamation regarding oral cancer. And I'd like to call on Mayor Pro Tim Crutchington to present that.
Thank you. I'm going to read a few excerpts from this proclamation. Whereas oral cancer kills more individuals as a percentage of those that get it than other cancers that we more frequently hear about. And whereas the majority of the time, oral cancers are still found as a late-stage disease because of the lack of awareness and the lack of a national effort to engage in annual screenings. And whereas late-stage discovery of oral cancer means significantly worse treatment-related illness and poorer long-term outcomes. And whereas oral cancer examinations performed by an oral health professional, like a dentist, remain the best method for detecting oral cancer in its early stages. Now therefore, Tom Adams, Mayor of the City of Monrovia, along with the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Oral Cancer Awareness Month. As many of you know, a little over two years ago, I was diagnosed with tongue cancer and immediately set about finding a place to be treated. And settled down with great pleasure our neighbor in our backyard, City of Hope. And in order to present this proclamation, I've invited here my oral surgeon from the City of Hope, Dr. TJ Gernan. Welcome, TJ.
Hi, Gloria. Thanks for having me. It's a real honor to hear you talk about, you know, oral cancer and oral cancer awareness. And I really am really grateful for that. So it's great to be here.
Well, I am grateful for the particular way that the City of Hope conducts their treatment in a team environment that includes not only the patient, but the patient's spirit. And I wonder if you wouldn't mind saying a little bit about that particular special way that the City of Hope works.
You know, you are correct in saying that, you know, before being at City of Hope, I've been at two other major institutions in the country. I was at the University of Washington and then at the University of Arizona. And when I came to City of Hope, you just noticed a real difference in the way that the patient is approached. And really, their treatment starts, you're immediately greeted by a team when you come into clinic. And it's a real patient-centered focus to make sure that the patient's care from every little detail is addressed the minute they get in the door. Whether that gets you into the operating room, or it gets you to see the radiation oncologist or the medical oncologist, getting you to see, in many patients' cases with oral cancer, to see a speech therapist to help them with their speech and swallowing issues. And then just coordinating that, so that it's real patient-centered focused. You know, I've worked in other environments where everything isn't under one roof. And it leads to real breakdown in care. And I think City of Hope has really done a great job to try to make it very patient-centered focused and as easy for the patient as possible. And really, not only treat the patient, treat the patient's family, treat the patient's psyche, treat everything. So it's more than just the cancer that we're treating.
And thank you for treating mine, so I can say as of the beginning of February this year, I'm two years cancer-free. Woo-hoo!
You've done excellent. I think it's amazing that, you know, even you've come through treatment so well. You're sitting here in front of the Zoom meeting. Everybody can understand you clearly, and you've been, you've just done wonderfully. And that's really what the goal is, is to get patients back on their feet, get them talking, get them eating, getting them back to work, and taking care of them. I do think that people need to realize that this isn't a disease anymore of smokers and drinkers. This is a disease of normal people like Gloria, like anybody, any hard-earned working person who has taken good care of themselves and done everything they can to have good health. They can end up with a tongue cancer, a tonsil cancer, a base of tongue cancer. And to seek treatment for that and don't get answers until you feel like you've, your questions have been answered. Because as Gloria talked about, a lot of patients show up to clinic with late-stage disease that was not recognized or not diagnosed initially. And so it's super important that you ask questions, that you ask your dentist to take a look at your mouth. And if you don't know what to do, talk to Gloria.
Thank you so much for being here with us tonight to help raise awareness about this disease. And hopefully, in getting to see you as well. Anyone that develops oral cancer can look forward to seeing your friendly face at City of Hope. Thank you for being here, and thank you for being an outstanding physician and surgeon.
Oh, thank you so much. My work is never done. I always strive to be better. Thank you for being such a great patient. Thanks for having me here. I will say, I just want to give a little shout out to Monrovia that we moved here six years ago. We live in Sierra Madre, but when my children were very little, we didn't have any friends, and we would come down to the Myrtle Street Fair every Friday night. And I absolutely love that event, and I love the restaurants and the nightlife in Monrovia. So I just, I think it's a great town, and I think you guys are doing great things. So thank you.
Well, Doctor, we appreciate you being here this evening, Doctor. And I think we all consider ourselves very blessed to have the City of Hope as close as it is. I know it touches so many lives. It has my family. We've got two survivors on the City Council. And thanks to you and everyone else at the City of Hope for the good things that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there's anything I can do for anybody that you know, even if it doesn't pertain to oral cancer, let me know, and I'll get them in touch with the right people. So.
Thank you.
We appreciate it very much.
Take care. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to PR 2, Proclaiming Donate Life Month, and Councilmember Chevlin.
Yes, thank you. And I do believe we have a representative from Donate Life California Donor Registry, Nancy Jolie.
Yes. Am I...
Jolly, just like Ho-Ho.
Jolly. Okay, all right. Well, thank you for being with us this evening. I'm going to read this proclamation, and then you can say a few words.
Thank you.
Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. And whereas more than 108,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 21,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average, 17 people die each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. And whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to 75 others. And a single blood donation can help three people in need. And whereas deceased organ donors saved more than 33,000 lives last year, the most ever. And whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions. And whereas over 17 million Californians have signed up with their state-authorized Donate Life California Donor Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored. And whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or for Spanish speakers, www.donaticalifornia.org. And whereas California residents interested in saving a life through living kidney donation may visit www.livingdonationcalifornia.org. Now therefore, Tom Adams, Mayor of the City of Monrovia, along with the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as DMV Donate Life Month. And in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes online when they are applying or renewing their driver's license or ID card dated this 20th day of April 2021. And with that, Nancy, would you like to say a few words?
I would love to tell my story. I have been a volunteer ambassador for four and a half years, and it is something that I love doing. My purpose is to get correct information in the hands of all people so they can make that decision for themselves. As we all know, there's a lot of incorrect information about organ donation out in the world. And so I feel it is part of my responsibility to help correct that. I am a donor aunt. I am a donor grandmother, and I am now a recipient's aunt. I've got some pictures, and I know they're going to be hard to see, but I'm going to try my best. So at the age of 41, my oldest nephew Lloyd received a head injury that he could not recover from. My sister-in-law made the decision that he would be an organ donor. Lloyd saved the lives of four people. A member, a friend of the family, knew that they had another friend that was waiting on the kidney list. As it turned out, my nephew was a match for this man. This man was blind. After his recovery, he asked if he could meet my sister and brother-in-law. He said, "May I please touch her faces so I know what my donor looked like?" My sister and brother-in-law received the most beautiful letter from the heart recipient. And the letter stated, "I want to thank you from the bottom of your son's heart for saving my life." Eleven years ago, my 18-month-old granddaughter Caitlin received a head injury she could not recover from. Her sitter was in a rage. She had had a huge argument with her husband and took it out on a crying 18-month-old little girl. My son and daughter-in-law were extremely brave. They decided that they would save others' lives by donating Caitlin's organs. She is definitely my angel hero. Caitlin saved the lives of three people. A 44-year-old man received Caitlin's liver. He had been bedridden for several years and could not play with his children outside. Upon his recovery, he wrote the most beautiful letter to my son and daughter-in-law, thanking them for the opportunity he had to once again play outside with his children and to live a full and happy life. Caitlin's liver went to a nine-month-old girl. The letter received stated she was doing fine. Caitlin's heart was flown to the state of Washington. There was not a recipient in the state of California. In the state of Washington was an eight-month-old little girl, given only two to three more days to live. This is Sophia. Sophia turned 12 years old this past September. She is feisty. She loves dogs. She is a Girl Scout, and she asked me if I would order cookies. Now, I have never paid almost $10 a box Girl Scout cookies before, but that was because of the postage, and I would do it again. We have had the very rare opportunity of meeting Sophia and her family. We have spent choice, beautiful times and days together, truly experiences we will not forget on both sides. A year and a half ago, my great-niece Victory was born, and it's a very appropriate name for her. It was found very quickly that Victory was not growing properly. The doctors found out she needed a heart and aorta transplant. This is Victory, right after surgery. Sweet Victory was only on the heart transplant list for four days, a miracle as far as we're concerned. Victory is a year and a half, doing very well. She's gorgeous. She's silly, and she gets into a lot of trouble. So that we love hearing. Now, this is where things get so interesting. My nephew that I told you about was the first organ donor in our family. Nineteen years later, his granddaughter Victory received the heart transplant. I am also an advocate for adult timeout. If you become angry, please take an adult timeout. Walk away. If you see someone else who is angry, please invite them to take a timeout. If an adult had taken a timeout, my beautiful sweet Caitlin would still be alive today. Thank you.
Wow. That's very moving. It brought tears to my eyes as well, and very moving. And many good reasons why we should all consider giving the gift of life, being a donor. And I can say, my son, he donated bone marrow and saved a man's life. It had leukemia.
That is wonderful. A hero.
Yeah. I don't know if he realized it at the time. He was in the Army. But very, very, very special.
I hope he realizes now he is a hero.
Yeah. Well, thank you very, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Any questions I could answer, I am available. You have my contact information. Contact away.
And Dylan, if we could have that information maybe posted, especially in your update, and make people aware of the opportunities to donate life.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy, thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you for those stories. I could see there were some eyes here that just couldn't stay dry through all of that. So we thank you for everything we do, or you do, and we thank you for sharing that this evening.
Thank you. It's hard not to have tears.
I can imagine. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll now move on to PR 3 regarding Arbor Day, and I'll call on Councilmember Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Adams. Let me pull up the proclamation here. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business area, and beautify our community. Now therefore, I, Alexander Blackburn, together with Tom Adams, the mayor of the City of Monrovia, along with the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the City of Monrovia, and to urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to brighten the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. I also have some additional information about Arbor Day. In the City of Monrovia, we are bringing awareness to the important role trees play in our community. This year, instead of celebrating one day, we will be celebrating an entire week by releasing daily informative videos, which will highlight the importance of the trees found in our community. These videos, produced by the Monrovia Youth Commission and Teen Advisory Board, will be available on the City YouTube channel beginning April 26th. Monrovia residents are also invited to register for an Arbor Day activity pack that will be delivered to your home the week of Arbor Day. Our Arbor Day activity pack will consist of a tree planting kit, arts and crafts, a special Arbor Day button, and reading materials on the history of Arbor Day. The space is limited and open to Monrovia residents only, so register today. For more information, please contact the Recreation Division at 626-256-8246. And that's all I have here, Mr. Mayor.
Alex, thank you so much for that. We appreciate it. And we'll look forward to continuing on with a tradition that has been around for a long time. Thank you.
You're welcome.
PR 4, National Youth Week, and I'll call on Councilmember Spicer.
I guess I'll present this to Sophia. So whereas the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks has designated May 1st through May 7, 2021, as Youth Week, to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition of their services to community, state, and nation. And whereas no event could be more deserving of support and participation than one dedicated to the young people who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society. And whereas our youth need the guidance, inspiration, and encouragement which we alone can give in order to help develop those qualities of characters essential for future leadership. And whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with our youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. Whereas the City of Monrovia will sponsor and observant during this, during that week in tribute to the junior citizens of this community. And now therefore, I, Tom Adams, Mayor of the City of Monrovia, California, along with the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim May 1st through May 7, 2021, as National Youth Week, and recognize the Dwardy Elks Lodge, number 1427, for their extraordinary vision and excellent service to the foothill communities of the San Gabriel Valley in Southern California, dated this 20th day of April 2021.
Larry, thank you very much. And I know here a little over a week ago, our own city clerk was able to present that proclamation to members of the Elks Lodge in person. And I know they were very appreciative of that. Okay, we will now move on to PR 5, Passing a Humane Society Pet of the Month. And we're going to have a little presentation here.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Adams and Councilmembers. Unfortunately, oh, I'm sorry. I turned my video off. My apologies. Oh, oh, sorry. Unfortunately, Michelle wasn't able to send us a video for tonight. However, we wanted to share some good news that, due to an immense amount of volunteers, all 1,400 animals at the Pasadena Humane are currently being fostered. So very, very neat there. Here on the slide is the YouTube video. If anybody wants to take a look, go ahead and visit pasadenahumane.org, at their website. They have this on the front page. And it's a little YouTube video showing about the full story and just some things that are going on over in the Pasadena Humane. In addition, on this slide are a couple of Pets of the Week. Here we have Nala, a one-year-old pitbull terrier mix. We have Eve, a 12-year-old kitty cat. And we have Hertzey, a 10-month-old guinea pig. And although these three are being fostered right now, they're still waiting to be adopted and join their forever home. So if anyone's interested in making them brand-new residents of Monrovia, please visit the website or call the number here on that slide for more information. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you, Mayor Adams and Councilmember.
All right, Lauren. Thank you very much for that. Any takers for the 10-month-old guinea pig? Now hearing none, I guess we'll move on. Thank you. Okay, we will now look to our student government representative. Sophia, how are you?
Hello.
There you are. Welcome.
How are you?
It's good to see you.
Good to see you too. Glad to be back. Okay, so school is now back in session. We have an extra 30 minutes for every class. So school is now from 9:00 to 2:25. And there are three cohorts, A, B, and C. Cohort A students will be attending school on campus on Mondays and Tuesdays. Cohort B, Thursdays and Fridays. And Cohort C will be doing distance learning for all five days. On Wednesdays, all students will be online, so our school can do a deep clean of the campus to eliminate any cross-contamination from the cohorts. Sports are also still active and have been having games on and off campus, just like any other year. And three weeks ago, we had our first in-person event. It was called Drive Through the School Year. The title kind of speaks for itself. It was a light-up drive-through of what a normal school year would have been like. So we had interactive rally games, clubs, the dance team was performing, also drama, jazz band, and cheer. There was also a homecoming section. I was the homecoming queen, and I was just waving at everyone. I had a lot of fun. The event went well. We had a larger turnout than we anticipated. All Monrobian residents were welcomed to the drive-through, and they estimated that about 300 cars drove through, people of all different ages. It was really nice to see our community coming together for an event we put on. So this is definitely something that our school will be doing annually from now on. And that concludes my report. But I also wanted to mention that I... And that concludes my report, but I also wanted to mention that I attended school on campus today and yesterday, so. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding on-campus learning or anything else.
Thank you so much for that wonderful review. Does anyone have any questions for Sophia?
I was just gonna say, how does it feel to actually be back on campus?
I thought it was gonna be really weird, but it's actually really nice and feels normal as normal can be. It was nice seeing everyone, mostly everyone, and my teachers as well.
Great.
Well, we appreciate you being here, and we appreciate the update. And if there's anything we can help with down at the school, don't hesitate to ask. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to. To get back to my agenda here, the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, any objection? Hearing none, I'll call for our Master Municipal Clerk, Alice Atkins, to call the roll.
It's Councilmembers Blackburn.
Yes.
Chevlin.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crutchington.
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you. We'll now move into public input, and I'm gonna ask our city clerk if she's received any electronic input. Before we open it up for oral communication.
Thank you, Mayor Adams. I have received one written comment, and if you'll indulge me, I'll just go ahead and review how people can participate in public input this evening, so. Obviously, we're still accepting emails up until five o'clock on the day of the meeting, emailed to myself. In addition, anybody watching right now on KJAM through TV or live streaming. Can participate and provide public input by joining through Zoom on your computer, laptop, or smartphone. The meeting ID for tonight's meeting is eight three four, six eight, six two, seven six, seven six. And I'll point out that all of this information is on our website for tonight's meeting, so if you don't catch any of the numbers, you can go ahead and check there. In addition, if you want to call in, just with a good old landline, you can dial six six nine, nine zero zero, nine one two eight. Again, using meeting ID eight three four, six eight, six two, seven six, seven six. And at any time during the meeting when it's time for public input, if you're joining on computer or smartphone, just press the raise hand. Button, or if you're on your phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and at the appropriate time. We'll call on you and unmute and offer to start your video if you like. Until then, everyone will remain muted. So with that, I'll go ahead and read the one written comment that I received from Sari Canalis of the Chamber of Commerce. She notes new members Calderon Mobile Notary. De Santiago Rolando Electrician. Bridges Rehabilitation, Inc., A Little Drusey. Skin Inc. by KD, Inverted Chaos, Gem City Grill, Keep 'Em Clean. Chronic's Tacos, Airpins LLC, The Turning Company, and JHC Design and Build. For a total of twelve new members from April eighth through the twentieth. Also announces again the Monrovia Young Professionals Event on Thursday, April twenty-second. From three to five, which is a spring planting event. And more information is on the website, our website under Public Comment, but as well as the Chamber of Commerce website. She also notes Chamber is looking forward to the upcoming Monrovia Days and Old Town Events, which will bring in more people to support local businesses. And that is all of the written public comment I've received. It appears that Brian Tyndall has raised his hand, so we'll go ahead, and you're welcome to speak. Brian?
Thank you for having me and making this available so that we can talk in person. I just wanted to say thank you for the Arbor Day proclamation. I think that's a huge step in showing our commitment to the trees. I know at the last meeting, there was some apprehension to having government in your backyard, which I completely agree and understand. If I'm ever able to afford a house, I would understand that as well. But something that might be a middle ground on this is we were looking at adding more trees to that list, specifically sycamore and I believe ash. And so maybe that would be a way that we could still protect more trees in the city without encroaching on people's personal property. Just making the sycamore and the ash in front and side yards protected. So I'd just like to encourage staff and I guess the Planning Commission. To approach that and speak to that in the future. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate you being here this evening. Good to hear from you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the council?
Don't see anybody at this time, but I'll just remind that if you are on and you'd like to speak, you can press star nine on a phone or raise hand button. I think that's it, Mayor Adams.
Okay. Seeing and hearing no more, we will move on to our reports of city manager and staff. Mr. Feek, you are up.
Hey, Tom, nice to see you today. Nice to see you, members of the city council. Just a couple of updates from the city manager's report this evening, which you have before you. Couple items that you can see we'll have tonight, including a review of our electric vehicle charging stations proposal. We're excited to finally have that. This is a first pilot. There's gonna be a lot of lessons to learn. And steps to take moving forward. So this first iteration that we present tonight, we're very excited about. And also very hopeful that in the future, we get to do more electric vehicle charging stations throughout the community. Couple of updates I'd like to provide you with as well that are not on your council directives updated list, which you have before you. One, just recently, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health issued a revised health order which allows what are called informal social gatherings. This means yard sales. So this week, we'll be sharing information with the public on the safety protocols and guidelines for allowing yard sales to occur. Hopefully in a safe way, but those are now allowed under state law as well as here within Los Angeles County. Interesting, we've received numerous requests for yard sales for the last six months, so I think a lot of folks are excited about this. Last week in the city manager's update, I provided information about some increased signage. The city's going to be placing up near the intersection of Ridge Side Drive and Oakley Drive. This area has received quite a bit more parked vehicles for people who are not allowed to use Monrovia Canyon Park and are instead going up to Lower Clamshell Trail, parking their vehicles there. It's creating much more traffic and congestion in that area, and one of the commitments we made to residents a long time ago. Was to try and protect the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood as best as we could while opening Lower Clamshell Trail. So we're just increasing more signage. The, hopefully, the signage will help people who don't live in the area to park further down the hill. It doesn't mean a little bit of an extra walk. However, they're going there to walk anyway, so hopefully it's just a little bit more time up in our beautiful mountains. Tina, as well as Councilmember Spicer and many others, are very busy at work preparing Monrovia Days. We do see a clear path forward to be able to host a different type of event, but nonetheless, an in-person event. So we're very excited. Can't say thank you enough to Larry, to Tina, to the many people from the school district, from Center Stage. Who are really coming together to try and make this happen. We're excited about it, and while it won't be the same fanfare that we always have, at least it's, we're able to have the event. We do wanna do, put our best foot forward, is this will be the, one of the first big city events in a safe way. We are following safety protocols for this, so we may get questions, we may get concerns from residents. We're prepared for that. We'll be able to respond to, or respond with the safety protocols and guidelines outlined by the County Health Department, which do clearly allow us to hold a special event. And we'll certainly provide much more information to the city council here in the next several weeks as we prepare for the, for the event on. Which will take place May fourteenth through the sixteenth. Last week, as well as earlier tonight at the joint study session, comments were made about we have all this new housing to build, but what about water? Do we have sufficient water? Tom, it's funny, you mentioned that earlier today. One of the items that we've been preparing to present to city councils, the status on our water. But also, as you know, each year, we have to decide whether we purchase water in advance from the water master. Or wait until the end of the year, and perhaps be required to purchase water at an increased rate. So an item will be coming before the council in the near future. As everyone knows. Here in Monrovia, we consume more water than we're able to produce here in town ourselves, or than we're able to. Then the allocation we receive from the water master, therefore, we have to purchase an additional allocation every year. And so the more consumption, the more housing units mean the more we have to purchase. And so this has been an ongoing instance for several years where the city uses more water than our allocation is. And as the drought ramps up. Water master starts to peel back on some of those amounts that we're able to receive, so it does become, it is becoming concerning. Staff is also looking at potential recommendations for council and some outreach we can do in the community to help us conserve water as best as we can. Finally, last update I wanted to give you, next week, staff will be meeting and having a much more in-depth discussion about reopening of city facilities, hopefully in preparation to present that to city council at a next meeting. We are, we are very excited that now vaccines are publicly available to everyone in the community. We've been encouraging everyone to go get them. City staff have been receiving them. Many of our staff have already received the second dose. We have partitions, hand sanitizing stations, all the safety protocols in place. So here in the very near term, we're hopeful to be able to reopen public facilities for public use. We don't know if that means the state will allow us to resume public meetings in person yet. We're still waiting for further guidance on that. But that is just a little bit of an update related to the current closure of city buildings. Those are my updates for this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have or address anything else I didn't otherwise. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dylan. Any questions for Dylan? Hearing none, we will move on to our reports of city council members. And we'll start with Mayor Pro Tim Crutchington.
Thank you. It was a pleasure earlier to introduce all of you to my cancer surgeon. And I just can't say enough about him and the city of Hope. A pleasure to be able to do that, and I have no formal report tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no formal reports tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. Mrs. Chevlin?
Thank you. I did have, I do have a few things here. I wanted to mention, we started off our evening tonight with a study session. And I just wanted to point out Dylan's city manager update, the one he did on Friday. It's got some great information in there regarding some surveys and other things regarding our general plan. So please reference that, and again, if you have not subscribed to Mr. Dylan's weekly update, please do. It's very easy to do. Go on our website, go to the city manager's update. There's a subscribe button right at the top of it, and very easy to do, and all this great information will come directly into your inbox every year, every year, every week. And I wanna thank Dylan for keeping us all informed. Did get a very upsetting and disturbing email this weekend with the notification that there had been yet another suicide of a high school student. And I'll just read very quickly. This was something that was received by Ulysses. My heart is broken. Another young life taken by suicide. My heart aches. Please pray for the mental health of those in our community, Monrovia. Please convey to your loved ones that you care and love them. Please reach out for support and resources if you or someone you know is struggling. And there's a local member, which is area code six two six, seven zero three, two three nine eight, and that's a twenty-four hour number. You can text or call. We are here to stand with you, Monrovia Healing Connections. There's also the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, which is one eight hundred, two seven three, TALK, T-A-L-K. And I know on our website, we've got information again through Dylan's updates. This Monday, Healing Connections did have a special meeting with many community members. And also Dylan was on the line, and he made, I don't know, Dylan, if you wanna make a comment about what you I didn't check with you first, but if you'd like to make a comment about the meeting.
You know, a lot of, lot of members in the community, leaders in the community are concerned. There's been, to what was, what was said, there's been five teen suicides in the last six months. And so it's people that come together to mourn together, to talk together, to share resources. I was invited to the meeting at the last minute, as was Councilmember Chevlin. We were very, you know, very quick to point out that our city council's been very active, very supportive, in trying to promote mental health awareness. With the recent proclamations, as well as updating city websites, sharing resources, and we really hope to be a partner in this. The city doesn't provide mental health outreach and education other than passing along information for, about those professionals who do. And I think generally, there's tremendous support and appreciation for the work the council does. So hopefully, hopefully, getting people in the same room to talk about it. Really figure out how we can reach out to some of these kids and make sure, you know, everybody who knows these, these young individuals, you know, they're gonna they're gonna need someone to talk to as well, process some, some heavy emotions right now, so.
Thank you, and not just for the teens. COVID has hit many people very, very, very hard. With depression and anxiety and whatnot. And so the more we can share with each other and let people know that we love and care for them. Help them get the need, the care that they need. So just wanted to mention that. This evening, I just received an email letting me know that the, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two years, COG year, nominations had closed for their leadership positions. And there were only one nomination for each of the executive board positions. So I am the incoming president for the San Gabriel Valley COG.
Yay!
So my first meeting will be probably in July, but it would be, it'll be confirmed in May, and then the COG will probably, the position starts July first, but I'm not sure if we're going to go dark in July or August. So at any rate, just wanted to let you know that I'm the incoming president. And it's just a little follow-up from our last meeting about local control. I wanted to let you know that I made good on my promise to reach out to our legislators. I also reached out to the San Gabriel Valley COG and through their legislative analyst, 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 excuse me. And our lobbyists to check with the legislators that they talk with, and then our own individual ones. Blanca Rubio, Assemblymember Blanca Rubio, Chris Holden, Assemblymember Chris Holden, and then State Senator Anthony Portantino. And I spoke with all of their field reps. I provided them with a copy of the resolution that we proposed that our last meeting indicated that it did not pass, but I wanted them to see it. Along with providing the link to the website about local control, California, and I wanted their input, and so I will be following up on that, but I wanted to let you know that I did follow up with each one of those individuals to tell them that we are very concerned about our local control. And wanted them to know this conversation is going on, so. Just wanted to give you that input. And April twenty-second is Earth Day. I don't know the, and the, is it the fiftieth anniversary, I think, maybe? I think it is. Because the first one was when I was eighteen and, oh, actually, I guess fifty-one years, but it was when I was a senior in high school. But, uh, it was when I was a senior in high school, a lot of lovin's and flower power at the time. So, but Earth Day is this Thursday, April twenty-second, so be kind to the earth. Thank you very much.
All right, Becky, thank you. Uh, next up, we'll call on Mr. Spicer. And Larry, you're muted. That's not an objection, but. You're still muted. There you go.
Not anymore. I'm gonna have to put you in the, um, adult timeout. I have an update on the Workforce Development Board, Mayor. And as you may remember, in August of twenty twenty, the city council approved a motion to leave the Foothill Workforce Development Board and to join the, um, Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board. Since that time, we've been very busy discussing the details and working towards a smooth transition pursuant to state law. We have, um, filed our application with the county, which now requires a thirty-day public comment period. And if the residents wish to comment on the application, they may go to www dot workforce dot LA county dot G O V. Or they can send an email to the W D B at W D A C S dot LA county dot gov. In addition, we will share information, um, in the upcoming city managers update. And also, uh, we just learned today that we had to, and this is the first. There's been other cities that have left their particular workforce board in order to move to another, um, workforce board. And they never had to, um, put their, um, lamb application, which is the local area modification application, on, they never had to put it on the website. But we found out today that we had to do it. And, um, just to let everyone know that our draft application will be on the city website for viewing. Also, uh, Mayor, um, you know, there's gonna be times where it's gonna, you know, people are really gonna start coming at us, you know, because we're leaving the workforce development board. And you know we're leaving it because we would like more services for our community. And it's all about our constituents. It's not all about friendship and all this, this chatter that's going on. It's about what we're supposed to be doing for our residents, especially now that the COVID nineteen is hopefully coming towards an end. We're gonna need to be able to have all the services that we can get for our constituents. So like I said, um, this is the public comment period. Hopefully, uh, the people that are in support of it can go on to our website and comment, or those who may not agree with us. That's your privilege. And that's my report, Mayor.
Larry, thank you so much for that. I know you've worked for years to try to overcome the challenges that the Pasadena group has presented us with. I was in a, uh, Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs meeting a couple of months ago. And this subject came up and there were two people in there that were, um, thought, oh no, how could you possibly want to leave them? And so I gave them our history and how we even invited the executive director down. And, uh, they're pretty much just ignoring our concerns. And that's why we're here. So Larry, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And I want to thank Dylan for all of his help. He has really been, um, I almost said a brother, but, you know.
Well.
Well, you know what I mean.
I do know what you mean.
Yeah.
I, I.
He's been, he's been, he's been right there for us, you know?
Larry, I'm down with that.
Tom.
It's all good. But I really do appreciate your help, Dylan. I really do.
Tom and Larry.
Becky.
I, I wanted to mention, I also had someone, uh, contact me from the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership, questioning, why would we do such a thing? And just as Tom did, I gave him the history of why and I explained. And I was telling him all the hard work Larry's been doing. And, uh, he then was educated and understood why. So need to get that, that, it's not a, it's not a bad thing.
Well, good. Good job, Larry. We appreciate it. Okay, I have several things to talk about. Actually, the first and foremost is masks. It's that simple. And it really is. And I know more and more people are getting vaccinated, which is good. Um, but just because you've had your shot or shots, doesn't mean that you can't get COVID nineteen. You can still get it and you can still spread it. The vaccine helps you not get sick from it. But that doesn't mean that you won't give it to someone else and make them sick. So, you know, just, uh, do it if you can, please. We appreciate it. Uh, we talked briefly about water. And, um, we are about five feet below the safe operating range, according to the San Gabriel Municipal, uh, Water Master. And that's the person who controls it all. So, uh, in our study session earlier, I specifically asked the question about arena numbers. Is, does anyone take into consideration when they tell us how many units we need to build, the fact that we're running out of water, we're running out of electricity, and we're running out of transportation? And, uh, the, the answer from our, uh, the folks that are taking care of that for us were no, that would be too much common sense, too logical, and arena numbers never have any logic to them. So, yeah, we, we really need to keep an eye on this. Um, what we managed to do with the developments that have been approved so far is require them to pay to import their water from the state water system at that rate. Uh, I don't know how much longer we can continue to do this, so we really need to keep an eye on it. Uh, last weekend, last Saturday morning was our MAP meeting. And I want to thank, um, everyone that was involved with that. You know the old saying, when life hands you lemons, you make lemonade. Well, we've been given a bunch of bags of lemons. And they did a phenomenal job of pulling off the annual MAP meeting, um, in, in a virtual format. So thanks to all of them. Uh, I know everyone really enjoyed it. Um, I participated in a meeting with, uh, Assemblymember Blanca Rubio and most of the mayors of her district, as well as city managers. And, uh, as we went around the table and expressed our concerns over what's going on in the state of California. And the universal theme throughout was the loss of local control. Um, when it got to me, I said, well, in addition to everything else you've heard, uh, one of the concerns we have is the constant changing of the election dates. And, you know, it used to be that we had regularly scheduled elections. And now what we're gonna have is occasional elections. And sometimes you'll run for twenty-one months and sometimes you'll run for twenty-seven months. And if the goal is to get more people to vote, one way to fail at that is to keep changing the dates. Because the more the public can rely on when election date is, um, the better off you're gonna be for turnout. So, uh, Assemblymember Blanca Rubio said she understood that, she agreed with it. She was gonna take it back to one of the committees that she's on and see if she can't work on that. Uh, so I was very appreciative of that. Uh, also met with, um, Congresswoman Napolitano, along with the San Gabriel, uh, Valley Economic Partnership, and participated in a meeting with her and her staff. And we're at a real loss not having Hector Ilizalde. And he has not been replaced yet. Uh, so we talked about that a little bit and some other things that they're working on. But we're always appreciated, appreciative of the Congresswoman's, uh, support here in Monrovia. And we're thankful for, um, what she does for us. So, if there's no other comments, we will move on to administrative reports. AR one is about electric vehicle chargers. And the really nice part about this is this company's in Monrovia. And, uh, I met with their leadership team here probably about two years ago. Uh, they do a phenomenal job. Uh, th- they're in Monrovia, it's local, and you can't get much better than that. So we're gonna turn this over to, I think, Mr. Feek. Nope, I'm sorry, Christopher Castrudo.
Thank you, Mayor Adams. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm very happy to present this evening on our electric vehicle charging station pilot project. Um, the city of Monrovia, as you all are aware, is, has not been the first to, uh, this type of project. Um, we did take somewhat of a wait-and-see approach, uh, looked around the region to see what has been working at various other municipalities, um, that have instituted electric vehicle, uh, public projects. Um, in addition, we look to really carefully craft a pilot program that would work for both Monrovia residents who own electric vehicles, as well as various businesses throughout our community. And we believe that, uh, hopefully that you'll see in the presentation provided this evening, um, that, that careful crafting and, and thoughtfulness that had gone into this pilot. So as a background, in November of twenty twenty, the city council authorized the purchase of six Chevrolet Bolts for fleet use. At the meeting, council also directed staff to investigate options for installation of EV charging stations, both for city fleet use as well as for, uh, the public. Now presently, there are six locations throughout the area where public EV charging stations are available. This includes a Shell gas station along Huntington Drive, the Walmart located along Mountain Avenue, and the Station Square Metro parking structure. As you'll note, there are currently no EV charging stations, um, expressly for city use. In addition, there are, uh, no charging stations located in or near the Old Town District, which is identified by the green square in the center of the map. In total, there are sixteen EV charging stations, um, in this, uh, across these locations. Um, the proposal this evening would increase that by twenty-five percent, uh, taking up to a total of twenty public charging stations. So since November of last year, staff has, uh, looked to identify some potential program needs, in addition to evaluate sites across the city where EV charging stations might be installed. Uh, we really did hone in on three program needs that we were looking to tackle. This would be firstly, to install EV charging stations for our city fleet use. Secondly, to install the first EV charging stations in or nearby our Old Town. It should be noted that these, um, city-owned public lots in Old Town have the highest rate of utilization by our residents and local business patrons. So we feel that this would be providing the greatest amount of public, uh, benefit. Finally, to develop a program that allows staff to gather information for deployment of additional charging stations in the future. So we might be able to iterate, uh, improve upon and proliferate these charging stations across the city. Um, based on the evaluations of multiple sites, staff has identified four locations that would be included in our pilot project. First, City Hall Parking Lot, the Public Works Corporate Yard located along Mountain Avenue, the Police Department Parking Lot, and finally, Public Parking Lot Number Four. This is a parking lot located along the one hundred block of East Lemon Avenue, directly south of Fire Station One Oh One. To provide some orientation of these locations, let's take a look once again at that map presented earlier, um, with the four sites, uh, that are being proposed tonight. Um, in orange, you can see on this map, the three sites that would be utilized for fleet charging and the one, uh, yellow site where the proposed public charging station would be located. Let's, uh, as you can see, a number of these sites are all located around the Old Town area. So let's zoom into an aerial view of Old Town to get a better sense of where those three sites would be located. As you can see, we've got the Police Department, the City Hall, and directly south of that, Public Lot Number Four, located along Lemon Avenue. Um, in order to get a better sense of the specific layout of each of these sites, uh, now we'll take a quick look at the various site layouts. As you can see, we'd be looking to install four EV charging spaces at our public charging location. Um, as is required by state law, we'd be looking to install one ADA accessible charging space, um, located, uh, at the left there. Um, in addition, we'd be looking to install one ADA access ramp and an ADA access aisle, as is required by state law. Should be noted that those, um, four charging spaces are located directly adjacent to the power source. Um, this was, is particularly of note, given that it helps us to control costs for this project. Moving on then, let's take a look quickly at the City Hall Charging Station site. As you can see, staff is recommending installation of two EV charging spaces. Uh, this would be located in the City, um, Staff Parking Lot located behind City Hall. In addition, um, as you can see, um, this is directly adjacent to the Police Department, uh, Parking Lot pictured there on the right. Let's move on now to the Police Department Charging Station site. As you can see, this is a little bit zoomed out image from the previous one. It's a total of four EV charging spaces that we'd be looking to install at the Police Department Fleet Parking Lot. Once again, this is a parking lot that is directly behind the, uh, Police Department, which is pictured in the bottom right corner of the picture. Moving on now, uh, we'll take a look at the final, uh, location for, uh, EV charging facilities. This would be our Public Works Corporate Yard located along Mountain Avenue. Uh, here we have an aerial view of the entire site moving, zooming in, uh, to the Corporate Yard Parking Lot. You can take a look at the site layout. Staff is recommending installation of two EV charging spaces, uh, located directly adjacent to the south wall of the Corporate Yard Building. As you can see, the power source, uh, is located inside of the building. Uh, staff located an underutilized, uh, electrical circuit, uh, on the first floor of the, um, building, which would be utilizing to power these facilities here. Now, electric vehicle chargers are categorized in multiple ways. They have many different characteristics. Um, for the sake of our conversation this evening, one of the most well-known, um, ways in which you can categorize EV chargers is by the rate at which they charge vehicles. Chargers can go anywhere from a level one charger up to a level three charger. Level one chargers, uh, run off of a one-ten volt circuit. This would be the equivalent of, uh, residential, um, home, uh, electrical socket. Um, as you can see, they do charge at a very slow rate, four miles for every one hour of charging. Moving up to the other end of the spectrum, level three chargers, they charge at a much higher rate. Um, a hundred miles for every one half hour of charging. Should be noted, though, that they also require a significant amount of voltage, four hundred eighty volts. Um, in addition, um, as you, you're probably well aware, level three chargers, commonly known as DC fast chargers, run on direct current circuits. Um, for those two reasons, they do require significant investment, eh, typically in electric utility infrastructure in order to, um, place a level three charger at any site. Staff has ultimately selected level two chargers as they provide a nice mix of cost to rate of charging. They're also the most commonly utilized, um, EV chargers at public charging sites. So most EV drivers would be very familiar with their use and be able to utilize them relatively easily. Now, EV chargers can also be characterized by the type of plug that they use. Um, level two chargers within North America commonly use one of two connectors, the J seventeen seventy-two connector, commonly known as a J plug. These are utilized by most EV manufacturers in North America, as well as most EV charger manufacturers in North America. Um, Tesla does have its own proprietary, uh, plug standard. Uh, in addition, they manufacture their own EV chargers to go along with those, uh, proprietary plugs. Um, it should be noted that Tesla, to my understanding, does now provide a J plug adapter, um, with the sale of, um, Teslas, um, in order to assist their drivers with being able to utilize those J plug. with the sale of Teslas in order to assist their drivers with being able to utilize those J plug connectors, which proliferate across the EV market. So staff is recommending use of chargers with J plug connectors, given their proliferation, as that will be able to provide the widest public use. Final way in which you can think of EV chargers is by the type of extra features that they offer. Some chargers are characterized as smart chargers, because they allow the owner to collect data on usage, in addition to track the electricity utilized, and finally, to even enable payment for the usage. Now, obviously, with those extra features, there are additional costs. And so for that reason, staff is recommending use of smart EV chargers specifically at our public charging stations, where that additional data would be able to provide additional benefit in terms of being able to iterate and improve upon our pilot program that's being recommended this evening. The dumb chargers would be utilized at fleet charging spaces in order to hold down costs for our fleet. In reviewing the market, staff did take a look at all of those various characteristics, ultimately settled upon the Webasto Turbo DX as our preferred charger for this pilot project. Should be noted that Webasto, as Mayor Adams noted, is an EV charging manufacturer with a North American headquarters located here in Monrovia. They do have a solid track record of providing charging equipment and support services to more than fourteen major car manufacturers presently. Now, if and when installed, staff would recommend a pilot program for our public charging stations. This would be at least thirty days of free charging at our public charging lot. The intention here would be to help build awareness of these new facilities, in addition to provide some additional data for development of future EV installations. We really want to understand the rate of utilization of these facilities, in addition, the usage patterns. Our folks, what time of day folks are using them? Does that rate of utilization change across the day and across the week? Our hope is that we can use that pilot period to collect data, understand those things, and then return with updates and recommendations once the pilot is complete. Staff is recommending use of the AQMD Motor Vehicle Subvention Fund for this pilot, for the funding of this pilot program. This is a restricted fund for the express purpose of reducing vehicle emissions. Undoubtedly, proliferation of electric vehicle charging stations would help to reduce vehicle emissions, and so it perfectly dovetails with the purpose of the program. The current AB twenty-seven sixty-six balance is more than two hundred thirty thousand dollars, and it is enhanced annually by local return funds of nearly fifty thousand. Tonight, staff is requesting appropriation of a hundred and twelve thousand, a hundred twelve thousand, six hundred dollars from the AB twenty-seven sixty-six fund. This would be for the purchase, design, and installation of our twelve EV charging stations. As noted previously, our EV chargers and equipment would be supplied by Webasto. Installation would be provided by Electric Service and Supply Company, contractor whom staff has utilized for a handful of projects and maintenance processes at various facilities. Finally, design for our public charging site would be provided by Merrill Johnson. Now, the city council has expressed a desire to have EV charging stations throughout the city. For that reason, staff anticipates including a budget request for additional facilities in the next two fiscal years' budgets. Staff is also actively pursuing multiple avenues to expand the availability of public charging stations, both at city parking lots as well as on private property. We're looking at the potential to expand into commercial shopping centers, potentially hotels, and perhaps even multifamily housing. We hope to continue this program and iterate upon it as we obtain additional data on usage and look to have additional updates as they be, as we can make them available. So, in summation, the requested action this evening would be to approve the EV charging station pilot project as described in the staff report, to authorize an appropriation not to exceed a hundred twelve thousand, six hundred dollars from the AB twenty-seven sixty-six fund, to authorize the purchase of twelve EV chargers and associated equipment, to award a contract to Electric Service and Supply Company in an amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, five hundred for the installation of those charging facilities, and to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents to move forward with this pilot project. Be happy to answer any questions you might have this evening.
Christopher, great report. We appreciate it very much. Any questions for Christopher?
Yeah, what is the maintenance, what is the upkeep on there maintenance-wise?
Councilmember Spicer, we do anticipate programming maintenance costs in future budgets. The, the specific pilot project does not include maintenance fees. Those are actually being waived for the duration of the pilot project by the EV manufacturer, Webasto, as well as their, their partner, PowerFlex, who provides maintenance support. I can take a look and provide those specific numbers, as I cannot recall them at this time. But I would be happy to provide them in the near future.
No problem.
Brian, I see your hand up, but we're gonna get questions from the council first, so patience. Becky?
I had a question. One of the pictures of the unit, as if it had two cables, are each charger, do they, do they just serve one or two?
Great, a great question, council member. I believe that this is the picture that you're referring to?
Right, right.
So, this would be an example of a, one of the types of public EV charging stations we'd be looking to install. As you can see, there are in fact two separate EV charging plugs on either side of a pedestal. In addition, at the top there, you'll notice that there are wires that, that are supported by the pedestal. Those provide cable management to keep the cables off the ground, so that way folks are not tripping on them as they come to and from their vehicles. We would be looking to utilize the two charger pedestals for one of the, for one of, for two of the spaces at our public charging facility. Due to space requirements for the ADA accessible charging space, we would have to utilize a pedestal for that separate space. And as a result, we would be required to utilize a pedestal for the fourth EV charging space. It's not optimal, but it really is what we need to do in order to abide by the state law with regards to the ADA accessibility.
But generally, the, the charging units have the capability of servicing two cars at a time, correct?
The pedestals do. We would be purchasing individual chargers for individual spaces and then attaching them to pedestals in the most cost-effective manner.
Okay, and but going forward, I would think the pedestals would be more cost-effective if, if you could install them and they have the two cables versus one for each space. I don't know. I haven't bought very many EV chargers.
That is correct. They most definitely would be the most cost-effective when laid out in that manner. And staff does look to provide them in that formation in as much as feasible. Again, part of what we have to deal with is the layout requirements of individual locations. And so in as much as possible, we would look to utilize this configuration with two chargers on one pedestal, again, to save cost.
So going forward, that would be a goal wherever possible, is to provide the pedestal system?
That is correct.
And, and what, the first thirty days are free? And then what is, how do we calculate then thereafter in terms of charge?
So, part of the reason why staff is requesting that first thirty days of free charging is in order to understand the, the specific costs we'd be looking at for the program moving forward. As you might be aware from your own personal residential SCE bill, SCE charges based on the time that you use electricity. And so, you know, depending on when we have the highest rate of utilization, it would really vary in terms of the, the actual cost we'd be looking at. In total, though, for the thirty days of free, of free charging, we would be looking at as, at, up to approximately four thousand, three hundred dollars for thirty days of charging if we were to see use across that entire timeframe.
And since it's free, is there any, or just generally thereafter, are there time limits? How, how long a car can stay and be charged?
Staff is currently studying how other communities are utilizing public charging facilities. There's a number of different ways in which we could go about this. In addition, there are some state laws that we would be required to abide by if we were to charge for these facilities, for use of these facilities, I should say. And so we'd like to study the issue, come back with that data, and provide a more expansive report at that time.
Okay, thank you.
We are utilizing equipment that is compatible with at least one or more of the existing apps that allow people to download the app on their phone, find the charging station, and charge to credit cards the amount of electricity they use.
That is correct, Councilmember Crudgington. The EV chargers, the Webasto Turbo DX, is compatible with an app that is readily available on the iOS App Store, as well as Android App Stores, and readily usable. In addition, we would be looking to, you know, advertise and make information available as far as the availability of these EV chargers through multiple applications in as much as feasible.
Which app is that?
So, PowerFlex has their own proprietary application. This is actually in use at the EV charging stations that they also service in the city of Pasadena and across various other locations in Southern California.
It's kind of a pain to download several different apps. So is this, since it's proprietary, is it widely used or just used locally?
Again, it is specific to various sites. I am aware of the fact that, that the city of Pasadena has a number of sites that utilize the, the PowerFlex services. And part of the thought with regards to it was that if it is currently in use at a number of sites in the region, it's highly possible that our city's residents, as well as business customers, would be able to readily utilize that app as well.
Well, there, I think there are more issues about that, but I'm, I'm more interested in making sure that we're investing, even in a pilot program, in equipment that we can, that can be used by a broad spectrum of electric car owners. So I, I just would hope we keep our eye on that. Do we have any idea, along the lines of Councilmember Spicer's question, do we have any idea what the useful life is of this equipment?
The Turbo DX chargers, I do not have that information readily available on the useful life. That being said, the chargers themselves are easily able to be replaced. And in fact, they are relatively low-cost once the other facilities are installed and available. So they can be changed out, replaced. And in addition, if it, it were to suit us, suit the city for further iterations of the program, we could in fact look to move on to a different type of charger and/or different type of facility, depending on the needs of the city at that time.
Well, I think after doing all of the work around town, this council in particular is interested in looking at the entire cost of the installations, including maintenance and replacement. Tom has been known for saying that we don't take very good care of our stuff. And I think in, in changing our philosophy to worry about things like that and to plan for it, it would be helpful going forward if we really had a good idea in terms of the useful life of the equipment and the maintenance costs, if you don't mind.
Yes, I'll be sure to look into that and provide additional information as soon as feasible.
Thank you.
And the good news on this, I think something like nine or ten percent of what we're being asked to approve tonight is actually for the cost of the charging stations themselves. The, the big, the big expense here is bringing the power to them.
Yes, absolutely.
As, as things evolve, and, and the nice part about Webasto, in addition to being in Monrovia, is they're one of the largest in the world. And I think they will continue to give us a pretty good deal on things. Any other questions from the council regarding this? If there are none, although this is not a public hearing, Brian, I saw you had your hand up. Do you have a question we might be able to help with?
I, thank you for recognizing me. I just am very excited to see that we're actually starting on this project. I wanted to point out that Monrovia only has one public station, not including Metro right now. Azusa, Glendora, and Arcadia all have around thirty. So I'm excited to see that we're already planning on the 2022 budget of having some more installed. I'd just like to agree with Gloria that ChargePoint is the app that has the most chargers available. It's also a great way to direct people where to go, and it helps drive people to commercial areas. And that's the app that really kind of everybody has, so ChargePoint should really be what you should be looking at for ease of use. I'd love to see some additional street signs. I know we've got parking signs directing people, but it'd be really nice to have a little tag underneath those parking signs that direct people to the EV areas. And what happens when people are not charging or they are parking non-chargeable vehicles in these spots? Who does that get reported to? And that's all I kind of had.
All right. Thank you, Brian. That was brought up earlier, how long can someone stay in that spot? Or, or maybe how long can someone park there that's not charging? We're gonna get an answer back on that. There will be signage, and there's a state law that we have to comply with regarding that. So we will move forward, but we appreciate your comments very much.
If I could just add one thing, the only app I've got, we've got a hybrid. The only app I have on my phone is ChargePoint. And I think that it is so easily accessible that anything we've got should be able to perform on that system.
If I may provide some, some additional comments, staff has taken a, a look at ChargePoint's programs and services. They do provide kind of a soup-to-nut style of service, wherein they look to provide the chargers themselves, ongoing, and ongoing maintenance in addition to installation services. And that's really their, their overarching model. Given that staff was really looking to customize and be, and have some flexibility in this. Given that staff was really looking to customize and be, and have some flexibility in this pilot program, there were some limitations in terms of moving forward as such if we were to utilize ChargePoint. Be happy to continue to investigate that for future iterations of this program, as that might be more readily available and more conducive to, to that in comparison to a pilot program.
Well, I'm just thinking, if, if what Brian said was true, and ChargePoint is the most used app, part of decisions about where to go, when you've got electric vehicles, is where you're going to be able to charge them when you get them there. And the, the, the more easy it is going forward to locate them and charge on your charge card when you use them, is, in some ways, going to play a role in determining where you go. And if one of the factors here is trying to drive business to downtown Monrovia, it would be a good idea to have easily-used chargers in downtown Monrovia.
Understood. And a, a very good point. We'll keep that in mind as we, as we look to further hone this program.
Thank you.
Okay, Christopher, good report. Any other questions for Christopher? Then I will entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the EV charging station pilot project as described in the staff report. Do I have to say anything further?
I'll second it.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Yeah, this is Alex. I'd just like to, I'd just like to thank staff for, and the City Council for moving forward with this program. I know I've been championing for some time, and I know that others did before me. And it's just nice to see this kind of thing come to fruition and, and kind of see the seeds of progress be planted, so thank you very much.
Good, good point. Very true. Any other discussion?
Well, I'd like to just thank Councilman Blackburn for bringing this up, and then bringing it up, and then bringing it up again. Thanks, Alex.
All right, you're welcome. My pleasure.
Okay, any other discussion? Then I will call on our master municipal clerk, Alice Atkins, to call the roll.
Yes, Councilmembers Blackburn?
Yes.
Chevlin?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Crougington?
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, this is a good day in Monrovia. We're going to finally move forward. The wheels of government turn very slow sometimes, but we're finally getting this going, so that's a, a good start to things. This concludes our meeting this evening, and I'm very pleased to see that we're not adjourning in the memory of anyone for this meeting, so that's always a good sign. We will be back here on Tuesday, May 4th. And again, just remember, you can join the meeting live. You don't have to email your comments and, and have Alice read them to us, so we hope to see you all here. And the good news is, on May 4th, we'll be able to remind you one more time about the Monrovia Days event that's coming up. So thank you all for being here, and we hope you have a great week.
Bye.